A minute before we start here, I just wanted to thank, you know, as we turn the page on 2024, I just want to thank all the staff, all city council, all the employees for all the work they put in in the last year. We had a lot of projects going on. We had a lot of building construction and it's, I know it's put a lot of extra work on your plate and I really appreciate you guys stepping up to the challenge, getting it done. And I look forward to 2025 being even more successful. So, thank you all for that. Now, so just stand for the invitation and pardon the allegiance and join me in a loud Lord's prayer, please. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy name will come, and that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to say our daily prayer, and forgive us our trespasses, if you have those trespasses against us, and lead us not into temptation, but to the rescue of the Lord. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to its republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any public comments? No communications still?
Nothing tonight.
The next city council meeting will be held Monday, January 27th, 2025, 7:00 PM, at the City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. We have several budget work sessions planned, Monday, January 27th, after the council meeting. That'll be the budget review discussion, Tuesday, February 4th, 6:00 PM, fire, general government and administrative. Thursday, February 6th, 6:00 PM, police and DPW. Monday, February 10th, after the council meeting, water and wastewater. Thursday, February 13th, at 6:00 PM, if needed. There is a proposal here that, since we're doubling up meetings with budget meetings, on January 27th, if we could meet at 5:00 PM, and we have the council meeting at 5:00 instead of 7:00, and then we will go into the budget meeting after the council meeting, so it won't be a long night for us. And February 10th, the same thing. So, how does everyone feel about that? We kind of, you know, we'll have the council meeting first, and then we'll go into the budget meeting. So, we'll have to make sure we make the announcement that everyone knows it's not a 7 o'clock meeting, so that council and the public can be well aware and be here if you want to participate in the meeting.
I hope that we adjust the times, Mr. President.
Okay, so we're all agreed to do that. So Rachel, if you could make that arrangement?
Yeah, Heidi and I will work through the posting and the notification for residents and small.
Okay, first thing up is, I need to get out of my seat so you can do a BDC presentation, or I'm gonna be blinded by this projector.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
That's great. And thank you, Mr. President, for moving forward and to council members for affording your time this evening. So, for 30 years, the BDC has assisted the city in all in grant management, while preserving existing relationships and collaborating to foster new relationships, to recognize efforts around the city of areas where we can grow our economic development. It's gonna take me a second just to figure out what to give them. So, why is economic development important to our city? $152 million of public and private, and the privately invested projects have been completed since 2017. Another $30 million are currently under construction, with a potential of another $70 million in queue. These are projects that have expanded businesses, increased employment, and addressed a considerable, considerable amount of our downtown structures that are aged and in need of restoration. What about our business structure in City Batavia? We have 635 businesses within our city district. The county as a whole has 1,689. Our largest employers are Graham, our city school district, the OMC, Chapin. And then the Gensey County employees, they make up one of our largest employers because they're housed in the city district. If you look at the numbers to the right of the screen, we have, of our 635 businesses, 349 of them have less than five employees. Our labor force is made up of about 7,500 individuals. The population in the city of Batavia is not quite 16,000. So, the less of the, of the difference between the 7,500 are children, people that are unemployed, and like, and social security disability. And you can see that industry and manufacturing is not a huge piece of our talent in our business in downtown Batavia. So, what does, what does that mean? That means that while we have our industry of our manufacturing on the outside of City Batavia, this is where we focus on trying to bring as much housing into the city as we can. The BDC takes guidance from the three planning initiatives that the city has. The Batavia Opportunity Area, which we call BOA, the Batavia Comprehensive Plan, and the DRI, the Downtown Revitalization Initiative. For BOA. So, with an award from New York State Department of State, the city established a committee of local leaders, stakeholders, and partners to focus on the best opportunities for redeveloping, vacant, vacant, and underutilized properties within the downtown area. This created the five focus territories that you see, Creek Park, Ellicott Station, City Center, the medical corridor, which is back off the living campus, and the Harvester Campus. At about four and a half acres, that area named as Creek Park is on a focus site for determining a format to maximize this parcel for housing. The parcel itself, as it's outlined in red on the left, on the left photo, is made up of pieces of property that is owned both by the Creek Park Batavia LLC and the City Batavia. During a recent public session, the committee that was developed to focus on this area shared results from the brainstorming sessions. We offered different perspectives that developers could use as a guide towards what the city would look, what look for in development in this area. The site has had its environmental testing completed, and is then scheduled to have the application submitted to the brownfield cleanup program with New York State. Another area in the BOA that was a focus territory is the Batavia City Center. As we've seen, the new entrances transform the exterior look of the building. There's so much yet more to come. This area here is an exterior wall to one of the new entrances. We do have an approved wall mural, an exterior art installation that will go in this year. Additionally, there were lots of lessons at the skylights that used to be in the old roof. There were trees and there was a garden. The flower bed that once existed down on the east end of the mall, it had dirt still in it. Anytime there was a community event, you would find children playing in the dirt. It was everywhere. We had the master gardeners come in from property extension, and they determined that dirt was not usable, and they suggested a sculpture garden. So, the BDC wrote a grant, and we had decking put in, had a local metal sculptor who, his medium is to work with salvage metal, created this ivy tree to belong with the motif of the structure of the inside of the city center. We also created a couple of plants. We had brick drums, some extra salvage metal. And then David Burke came in and put the lily pond mural on the floor. Additionally, we have two other art awards that have been approved. One's for an individual installation that we will see here this year, and the other is for collective, which would be multiple artists coming in. We'll sort of focus on keeping some of the public art structures down in this area. All of this is just to aid in with the placemaking that we find, which is placemaking is an extension of community, is to take public space and to make it more inviting. A third spot that was a target for the BOA committee was the Healthy Living Campus. The top photo is from the DRI application and the photo BOA took last week. That was pretty neat to see that it turned out pretty much like the intended look from almost years ago. Second initiative that the BDC follows would be the Comprehensive Plan. The BDC has taken the lead on managing the administration of numerous funding sources awarded within the City Batavia. And this is to support small businesses, activate the downtown, aid in redeveloping vacant and underutilized buildings. One item that we use to do this would be the revolving loan fund. In 1997, the city authorized the administration of the revolving loan fund to the BDC, using this fund to support our small businesses with loans and grants, businesses for startup, expansion, building modifications. Just in the past five years, we've used the revolving loan fund to support 10 different projects that totaled $3.2 million in capital investment. This is, these projects along have increased the tax assessment, their tax assessments by $350,000. But that doesn't stop there. Many of those projects are still in the process. So, over the next two years, we'll see those tax assessments continue to increase. The photos that you're seeing there would be the Beer Garden behind Eli Fish, Eagleway Solutions. They'll play along Casey Law Office, their renovation to their facade. 41 and the Center, and the BOA is, BOA becomes Chef Wanda, and then the Wandas. Activating our downtown. So, this is a great example of private and public partnership, improving public space to attract more visitors to boost our local commerce. So, with the Jackson Square project, we'll have the beer garden behind Eli Fish. And it's hard to see, but there is a revolving loan fund that is also doing facade improvement to the patio, the second star patio behind, oh, Smolga's.
Center Street.
It's the Center Street. But this light is just for fun. So, I have a friend that had, had an apartment on Jackson Street who let me go up on the rooftop and turn on all the cans Mary Lady and take a photo of it. This is my favorite sign. The redevelopment of the vacant buildings. So, you have straight across the board, you have Eli Fish, the Nubert Building, the Cars Building, the Thompson Door Building, the Gensey Hugelbank Building. And what they have become and will become from investments through the BDC and City Batavia. Eli Fish was the recipient of an anchor grant for their Phase One, to turn the Newberry Building into the Eli Fish Brewery. And also a business improvement fund grant out of the DRI for Phase Two, which was to renovate the apartments on the second and third floor. The Eli Fish Building had been vacant, not yet 100% prior to the ownership of it over, for about 12 months, which is probably way get prior to it being taken over. Prior to that, the Red Cross was the only, for a couple of years, the only company that was in the building. The Cars Building is the recipient of the DRI and a Restore Grant. That building had been vacant for over 20 years. 99 Main Thompson Door Building, recipient of a business improvement grant from the DRI and a revolving loan fund, one of the last one to go through last year. And it had been vacant, Dr. Napoli purchased it in 2019, and it'd been vacant about two years. And then 99, or 97 Main, the Hunt Building, which was the first bank of Jersey, it had been vacant for nine years, and it was the recipient for Phase One of the New York Main Street Grant. And has been pending grant application for Phase Two through the Anchor Program. So, what do all of those grants mean? I just ran a whole bunch of names and a bunch of acronyms. Let's do a little definition for a hot second. The Anchor Grants, they are substantial grants that go up to an application of $500,000 there for interior exterior renovations to a key or anchor building. So, you would have that for both the application for the Hunt Building and for the Eli Fish. Restore, Restore Grants are a much larger amount. They were reduced just this year to $1 million. Prior to that, you could have higher. They're to address dilapidation, buildings in areas that are chronically vacant. There's safety hazards and a parcel or area that has a negative impact on the community. DRI, well, we all know the DRI, it was $10 million back in 2018, and that's the bucket that does it all. We can use those for transformational housing development and a mix of public and private grants for projects. And then New York Main Street, those are building improvement grants. When we get one, sometimes as a whole, and we can facilitate projects that will reduce project costs to multiple buildings for facade improvements and building upgrades. Our downtown revitalization initiative, we had eight projects that were awarded. And with the DRI BIF project, at the end, we have an additional five projects in there. This screen looked way different last year. Last year, the only two projects that were completed out of this was Ellicott Place, which is the City View Apartments of Osage Lock, and Theater 56. So, I know every single project is either completed in construction or circumstances beyond our control. These are fresh pictures from the inside of the Cars Building, other than the one-ups with the X-out windows. Those windows have been replaced. So, in the right-hand corner at the top, I threw that in there because it's the elevator. It seemed to hold a lot of memories for people in Batavia that remember going there, either as a kid or young adult, and riding the elevator. I heard a lot about that. The Building Improvement Fund is with the revolving loan fund that was approved at the end of last year. It made the project of 99 Main in completion and finishing up this part of the DRI. Apartments were put into 242 Ellicott Street with this project. The Apartments of Eli Fish were renovated. The facade at Jackson Street. 2006 East Main Street is the building that has Main Street Pizza. It would have had apartments that would have been renovated to be leased up, but the building itself wasn't structurally sound, so the project had to be rerouted. And in the future, it can have apartments up there and all of it's healthy. And this is that last project. So, when I would have presented 99 Main for revolving loan fund at the end of 2024, you wouldn't have seen these pictures because it wasn't quite complete. And now we have two luxury apartments on the, on the third floor. They both have a mezzanine level and outdoor living space on Main Street. For the capital investment, in the past, the BDC may share with what, over the course of decade, two decades, you've invested into the City Batavia. But I'm gonna really just focus this evening on the projects that we have seen over the last couple of years. These are the projects that I've had my hand in since I've been hired. The DRI projects, those eight projects with the five separate projects that were involved in the Building Improvement Fund. The recent New York's Main Street Awards. There was a large anchor award that we closed out in 2024, a New York Main Street Building Improvement Award that we closed out, and the technical assistance award for the Brisbane Mansion reuse analysis. Also in 2024, we utilized the revolving loan fund for four different projects. One, it was a large loan that we did to fund a build, a business expansion of our products. And then we did three building improvement. Just those projects alone, those are 16 projects. They, their assessments were four weeks from starting. We're gonna go back to the 2018 to 2020 timeframe. Their assessments totaled a little over $4 million. To date, they're almost $10 million. So, there's been over a $5 million increase in assessments just from those 16 projects alone. And as I said earlier, some of them haven't even completed yet. So, we haven't even seen what the increase in those assessments will bring. That's our city right now. So, you've seen where we are. So, where are we going? What's next? And we see how big our city is, but, so what's next on the BDC plate with our partnership with the city? We still have the Brisbane Mansion, the RFP that needs to go out. We have our Restore Application together in the Harvester Campus. We have the Creek Park parcel that's going into a brownfield cleanup program. We'll look at development over the next 12 to 24 months on that. The City Center parcels, we'll all learn with the new owners. The city currently doesn't own any of the parcels in the mall. And we have GZ Penny that's going up for auction this week. We have four large potential projects that we are looking at. One is the new ownership of the Supergate with the Days Inn. And that's something about DRI 2.0. Those are the big things. We're gonna be racing a lot of each other. But, so it's been very busy in 2024, closing out. We have new grants that we're starting. And, and a lot to look forward as far as development goes. Any questions? It's a big dump. All the information was too big. So, thank you. Thank you again for your time.
Okay, just reiterate, any questions for Tammy? Thank you very much, Tammy, for a good presentation. It's nice to see all those projects completed. I think, is the Y still under construction, or it was saying, it was probably an old slide?
No, it's still under construction because part of the project improved the demolition of the old building.
Oh, that's right. Okay, so until that's completed, then the project isn't technically closed out. Got it. Letter requesting increased AMI aid.
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman P. For you, you have a letter and a resolution. If council so authorizes to send to our legislators and governor to increase the AIM aid. The city has not seen an increase, nor have other cities, since 2012 in AIM aid. Last year, we did receive, through the state budget, temporary AIM aid payment in the amount of $203,000. Of course, the city, small cities around New York would like to see that continue at that level and higher, similar to how school districts get funded. So, I'd ask if you would authorize moving this resolution forward tonight.
Any questions or concerns on that? Everyone got a chance to read the letter, it was in the packet. So, are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting? So, they have to move to tonight's business meeting? Capital projects year-end closeout.
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman P. The city is prepared to close out three capital projects, including the Harvester and Richmond Street project, the Bank Street Water Project, and the Jackson Street Water Project. A transfer of $13,660.56 is required to close out the Harvester and Richmond project. And overall, I had Lisa just run the numbers. In total, the projects came in very close to budget, each of them. And we did not have any very large cost overruns. And these have all had final audits done with the state grant agencies, so they are ready to be closed out.
Any questions or concerns on that also? It's, it's nice to see them close out. We've been seeing them through our packets in many years now. Especially the Harvester got delayed, I think, at one point, and it finally got in. So, it's nice to see them all completed. So, good work on that. So, are we in consensus to move those capital projects year-end closeouts to the Pinnies Business? I think it's move. Residency waiver.
Yes, before you, you have a residency waiver for a police officer. And as we discussed in November, the city's department heads are working on a residency plan to better meet the city's hiring needs, that will be presented to council in the future. But as that process moves forward, this residency waiver request came in. We have just the one waiver, and Chief, if there's anything you'd like to add to that, please.
No, it's for Officer Smith. His letter is attached. As you can see, it's very well thought out. He is a very dedicated employee, although he's only been with us a short time. He intends not leaving. He intends staying here. He is, again, a very dedicated employee. He has seen issues with the number of people that are coming to us to take the exam these days. So, in interest of retaining people, I think we need to do whatever we can.
Well, I think we, we're already looking into it. It just shows, whenever these come up, it just shows that maybe our circle of residency is too tight. And we need to consider expanding it. I mean, if the person shows up for work on time, why would we tell them where they have to live? I mean, it's a free question. If they're responsible, and they gotta drive an hour, that's their life, that's what they choose to do. People from Batavia work in Rochester, and they have to drive in the winter, and they have to get up there, and they're there. So, if we address it as any other employee, if they're late for work and you gotta address it, that's, that's a different story. But if they're showing up, I have no, no problem with living wherever you want, within a reasonable distance, so they can get here. But it's something we should be considering, and I think we are. So, we need to move that forward and get that figured out, so we can find a balance.
Yeah, I'll just add that we have met as department heads around this subject. We've come to what I feel like is a consensus to move forward. I've shared that with our labor attorney. He's triaging our issues right now, and that's kind of towards the bottom. But he just promised me in the next week or so, he'll get an answer to me, and hopefully we can present something to council in February.
And, you know, if we want, you know, employees And, you know, if we want, you know, employees to live here, I mean, I live here, I have no problem with it. But some people have other lives, and then they took this job, and now they have to upend everything to come here. And that's, some people do that, some people don't. But, you know, keeping that in mind, we just have to be a little more flexible and understanding on this, and maybe offer incentives to move into the city instead of demanding they do based on a residency requirement. Then we lose good quality people. So something that's gotta be balanced out and figured out, something we definitely need to look at.
And the housing market doesn't help. There's rarely more than ten to twelve houses for sale in our city at any time.
I was on Noff and Abel's website this weekend. I think there's two for sale in Batavia right now, but aren't under contract.
Right. So it's almost, there's nowhere for them to even move into, city limits at this point. Hopefully, through all the initiatives we have and single-family housing rolls at North Point Drive, we'll be able to add some residents and add to the tax base and give those employees that want to be right here in the city a better option to be here.
Correct. Anyone else concerned on this one? So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting? It gets moved. Amend the twenty-four twenty-five budget V L T R L F grant program.
Yes, thank you, Council President. The V L T funds for economic development were brought forth in the governor's budget approved by the legislature. So the city did receive four hundred and forty thousand dollars. So far this year, we have expended some funds committed to overlapping a retiring detective's position for increased training, but nothing else at this time. I'm recommending that the city council use thirty thousand dollars in V L T funds to recapitalize the R L F grant fund. And this goes along with a second resolution you'll see that's asking for another seventy thousand. So the total ask is a hundred thousand dollars. And as Tammy was just mentioning, the R L F grant fund was created in twenty-eighteen. It's been utilized by ten different building owners. The maximum grant that a building owner can receive is only twenty thousand dollars. But of those ten projects, the total capital investment that those building owners put out was three point two million. As Tammy stated, there's been about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of increased assessed value with about three or four projects not completed. So we don't know what that'll end up on the rolls. And I think it's just a really good value and a unique program only our city offers that I'm aware of across New York State. So I would ask for consideration of this resolution in addition to using AIM aid of seventy thousand in the follow-up resolution we're going to review. So I'm happy to answer any questions and talk through what that looks like, but it would be one-time city revenue. These are not funds that we can use to balance our budget because we don't know if they'll come through every year. And we have to look at them on a case-by-case spending priority for one-time items.
Any questions?
Yeah, this is V L T money we presently have.
This resolution, yep, is V L T money that's already come through the door. Correct.
And the other question I have, does bid still have their facade improvement fund?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Don't they get assessed money for, to put into that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Because I haven't heard of any facade improvements in several years now.
Through the bid, since I've been city manager, there hasn't been a facade improvement program with the bid.
I thought they still had to pay him an assessment, an annual assessment.
Nope, not that I'm aware of. The issue they had back in seventeen eighteen with the comptroller when they were overcharging the properties for district improvements, those funds have been put aside for capital improvements as the bid board decides how to utilize them, and they have for certain things like lighting and banners and things on Main Street. But to my knowledge, there's no facade improvement program running at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Turn it up. So are we in consensus to move the R L F V L T fund grant program to tonight's business? It's moved. So Swan Street Sidecar Project?
Yes. You have an updated and restated resolution. I failed to include the amount for construction inspection on the last resolution. And per the state grant contract, that needs to be spelled out in the resolution. It doesn't change the price at all, but it just authorizes us to sign the scope of services with the ballot to move forward. So I'd ask that you would move forward the amended restated resolution. The total project is one point four million, two hundred and thirty thousand in design, a hundred and eighteen thousand for construction inspection, and one point zero eight million for the construction of the sidewalks on the Swan Street project.
And that's, the important part of that, it's a twenty percent matching grant, but CHIPS funding will cover that part of it.
That's correct.
So it's gonna break up for us. We're not gonna have to dip into our funding to fund it, right?
Yep. Those CHIPS monies could have been used in other places, but we feel like using them as matches is a really healthy way to get these types of projects done.
And sidewalks are important to a lot of people in the community, especially Swan Street's been kind of pretty tattered in some spots, so it really needs it, so.
Yep, and this is a transportation alternative program grant, just so everyone's aware.
Correct. Any questions or concerns on that? So are we consensus to move that to tonight's business? That goes. ADA coordinator designation.
Yes. The city would like to update the ADA coordinator designation and fair housing officer to the assistant city manager. The assistant city manager will work to bring a perspective of accessible development to all city projects, ensure services are delivered, keeping accessibility and nondiscrimination in mind, and review any grievance complaints associated with a complaint procedure under the Americans with Disabilities Act. We recently had a comptroller's ADA audit of this facility that went very well. And we, one of the items they suggested is having an ADA complaint policy, which we did not previously have. So that is the next item on your agenda. But to make the process work, we need someone other than the city manager to be the ADA coordinator to take in any types of complaints because the city manager would be, have a final ruling or say if there was any type of disagreement or someone didn't get satisfied. So we need.
Do you want to handle the appeals?
Of appeals, thank you, yes. So we have, in the past, the city's had either the assistant city manager, the H R director, or the city manager be the ADA compliance officer and fair housing officer. So we'd like to shift it back to the assistant city manager.
How do you feel about that, Eric?
Just one more of those unpaid things I've got, I guess. It's fine. It goes along the lines of what we do with insurance and that, so it's a natural fit.
And safety.
And safety, absolutely. And to Rachel's point, the audit we had did go, did go very well. There's a few small items we have to take care of, which we're glad they do. But it kind of opened our eyes to the fact that we had to have this policy.
Great. So we're talking about the coordinator, and you want to just lump in policy in with this discussion and then?
I would like, yes, we have separate line items for it, but we do recommend that city council approve a formal grievance procedure under the American with Disabilities Act. It will allow ADA coordinator, hopefully now the assistant city manager, to investigate any complaints, alleged discrimination on the basis of a disability.
So any questions or concerns on both of those two items? So we are consensus to move that to tonight's business? It both of those get moved?
Also, I should note, the complaint policy is the same as Genesee County's as well. And they were very helpful, Pam LaGru and Matt Landers, in sharing their policy and explaining how their process works.
Well, that's even better because now there's consistency from county and outside. It'll be the same.
Yep, correct.
Fire Department key fob?
Yes, the fire department key fob system and use of administrative reserves is the next resolution for your consideration. The City of Batavia Fire Department needs to purchase a new building access control system as their current system has reached the end of life, is no longer serviceable, and we can't get key fobs for new members, so they can't get into their building when they show up to work. Eric, anything you want to add to that?
Well, we found a way that they can get to work, but we look forward.
We open the door for them.
Right. One of the things that we look to do in this is to look forward a little bit and to reach out to our architects and engineers on the police station building to see what we're gonna put in there, which is Linstar, which is a business that we currently use for our cameras as well as some other items throughout the city. So it made perfect sense to contract with them. They are, they are on the state contract. So the similar system that we're putting in the fire will be as similar, if not the same, as what's going into the police department. So we'll have one vendor that we're working on for all the key fob systems.
And cameras, which is nice.
And does this include an annual maintenance fee?
It does, yes.
The resolution for reserves costs, is the construction cost, the annual maintenance fee will be reflected in the budget as an operations cost.
It's in the memo. It's twenty-four hundred dollars for the year.
Can we get a discount for, like, having multiple buildings on? Because we don't have.
It's not the state contract.
Oh, it's the state, so it's already kind of stayed there.
We're gonna write it all off as a construction cost for the police station.
So it's a two hundred thousand dollar overrun?
Put on your earmuffs.
I'd suddenly lost interest in that idea.
Thanks.
Okay, so, all joking aside, we have the key fob system. Obviously, we need to replace it. So, I don't think, Bob, go ahead.
Yeah, is there any way that we can make our own key fobs? And the reason I ask, I know of two other government agencies that have had similar problems, and the companies just, boom, they're gone. They're out of business, gone, folded up, and they're stuck with it. They can't get new key fobs. They got nothing but problems in it.
That is not something that we've looked into, and I don't know that it's something we'd want to look into. I think the expertise behind that is, would be pretty significant. Either way, no matter what you do, we're not a company that does that. So I would eventually guess that they might have their own way of making the actual fobs or programming the fobs, but I don't believe that they're actually handling all the entry and exit systems in the buildings.
We do program our own fobs.
We can't program our own fobs. So to give me access to everything versus giving somebody else access to two or three different rooms, we have the ability to do that. We don't have the ability to actually service the systems and do all that kind of stuff.
And are you gonna be purchasing the actual key fobs, or are you just gonna be using I D cards now? So a lot of companies just go, you just scan the I D card.
We'll be using fobs, just like we currently have. Agent, agent.
I think the county uses Linstar too.
Oh, okay.
So just my fob, it's not fob, and they're made by the county, but we swipe into Linstar.
So maybe it won't be, I mean, it depends on the system, I guess, right?
Yeah, right now, we're using fobs. We may go with something down the line, but currently it's fobs.
Yep, whatever works. Okay. Anything else? Any other questions? Okay, so are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting? It gets moved. Main Street Anchor Grant.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Please note, I did set a new resolution on your desk that includes the budget amendment. I had failed to put the actual budget amendment into the resolution when you received your packet. The project is Hunt Commercial Real Estate located at ninety-seven Main Street in downtown, and it was selected as a New York State Main Street Anchor Grant recipient. The project will remodel the building, creating four new upper-floor apartments and one commercial space. So on that picture Tammy showed you of all the buildings, one by one, on that block being completed, this will be the last one. The total investment from Hunt is one point one three million, and the grant is for five hundred thousand in expenses. Council did authorize back in June for the city to apply to either a Main Street grant or an anchor grant. And when we went through the process of determining which we'd be more likely to receive, this was the one. The applicant did pay for their application to go in, and we're hoping council will approve this and do the budget modification for us this evening.
Questions or concerns on that? Okay, so are we in consensus to move the anchor grant acceptance to tonight's business? It gets moved. Now the anchor grant administrative authorization.
Yes, as we have in the past, and as Tammy noted, the BDC does a lot of the economic development grant administration for the city. And we'd like to also have her as the director of the BDC administrative grant program on behalf of the city to assist Hunt in everything they need to get the project completed and the funds reimbursed on the project.
Any questions or concerns on that? So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business meeting? It gets moved. Railroad Access Agreement.
Yes. Before you, you have a standard railroad access agreement between Dupuy and Lancaster Western Railroad and the City of Batavia to allow construction of the Walnut Cohacton Water Line and a portion of the railroad property. You will see tonight that we did have bids come in, and we'd like to award the Walnut Cohacton Water bids at the business meeting. But this is just a standard agreement to allow us to work on a portion of the railroad property for the water line.
Any questions or concerns ahead? Okay, are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business? It gets moved. Amend the twenty-four twenty-five budget R L F grant program and public safety expenditure.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Per the previous discussion, the city was awarded two hundred and three thousand dollars along with cities across New York State in additional AIM aid for this year. We're obviously asking that the governor's office and the legislature continue to make these funding in AIM aid. But we've expressed our concerns that we can only use this aid for one-time purchases. So we wanted to bring this forward tonight after we've getting ready to close out the budget season wherein now there's only three more months left. We feel we're in a good position. We'd like to allocate these funds. The other portion of the R L F grant of seventy thousand plus funds to support police and fire one-time spending that we couldn't fit into this year's budget. So I'll let Josh and Sean go over the items in the resolution and discuss what they would be purchasing if council authorizes this funding.
Yes, Mr. Council President, council members. So we are currently working on a training area within the city. And part of that would go towards getting that site work completed, as well as some props. We're also looking at replacing an airbag kit, which we use for vehicle obstification, as well as somebody strapped in machinery or something like that. We can use that to actually create a. Additionally, our radios are coming up on their end-of-life service life. They can no longer be repaired. So that will be replacing some radios that need to be taken out of service.
Yeah, as for the police department, we're looking to purchase an additional street surveillance camera, which are very beneficial to our operations. When we transitioned over from the Glock Model Twenty-two to the nine-millimeter blocks, our training Glock handguns did not transition with those, so they do not fit into our duty holsters anymore. So we'd be looking to swap those out, as well as purchase some additional ammunition for E R T training and E R T rifle replacements across the board. So those items have many rounds through them, and it's time for them to see, get a different call.
Lastly, the D P W, we're looking to partner with the school. We had a meeting with the superintendent about L E D flashing crosswalk signs at major crossing routes near the school. So safety, safety purchase, and trying to get those signs up, just to alert drivers that it is a crossing intersection and to be aware of students crossing.
Any questions?
Is there one in Richmond that's often repaired yet?
The one in Richmond?
Yep, on the east side of Oak Street and the north side of Richmond, the sign was, the whole post was knocked over here, three, four weeks ago.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it has, Scotty. Do you know if it says already here or?
That was per John Ward. That's with the power bit? Yeah.
Did you hear? Parts are in order.
It's a plating. Thank you.
So I do feel that it's important to, you know, show the governor's office and representatives that, you know, we received this AIM aid. There's definitely things we've foregone in our budget that we're able to now purchase with this AIM aid in hopes that our coalition of N I Com and our Finger Lakes Mayors and Managers Coalition can be successful in bringing in more of the AIM aid, so it can be used inside the budget and not just for these one-time purchases. So those are ongoing conversations we're having with governor's staff and legislators.
And yeah, that kind of covers the letter that we talked about earlier. It's a group of communities that are putting the letter together to petition the governor for continued or a permanent increase. It hasn't been done since twenty-twelve, I believe.
Correct.
So budgets have increased, costs of everything is. So budgets have increased, costs of everything has gone skyrocketed, and AIM aid has remained flat for like 15 years now. So it's uh, starting to be a burden, and it needs some relief. So any questions on that? So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business? Okay, license agreement with Everybody Eats.
Yes, thank you Council President. The last item on the special conference agenda is a license agreement with Everybody Eats Keter and LLC to use a portion of the space in City Center for a patio dining um, within the concourse. If you'll remember back in last summer, we did a very similar agreement with Eli Fish, um, because their uh, space extended about four to six inches into Jackson Square. So um, by having this license agreement, the Everybody Eats Cafe can set up tables in the space and provide us with the appropriate insurance, so we have no liability and continue to operate their business here in City Center.
There's a map in there that shows you where it is, anybody, you can probably look at it and he mentioned it, if anybody has any questions or concerns? So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's business?
Yes.
Okay, that does. Um, motion to adjourn? Mr. Twichell. Second in line, Mr. Richmond. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Twichell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs? Schmidt? Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes. I now call to order the business meeting. You've all been given a copy of the November 2024 financials. If you have any chance to look them over, any questions or concerns or omissions or conditions or things you'd like to have clarified, now's the time to ask. Okay, so um, are we then in consensus to approve the November 2024 financials? Do those get approved? You've also received a copy of the December 2024 minutes, I believe it encompassed two meetings. Uh, a conference in the business, I think we're in there, I don't remember reading it correctly. So any questions or concerns on that? Any omissions or concerns? Okay, so are we in consensus to approve the December 2024 minutes? Do those get approved? We have numerous agenda items today, we'll start with number one, 2025. The um, infrastructure improvement Cohactin Water. Mr. Guinness. Number two, 2025, the uh, state aid for local governments, Mr. Richmond. Three, 2025, DPW reserves amend the budget to close out capital projects. Mr. Twichell. Four, 2025, the waived residency requirement. Ms. Briggs. Five, 2025, uh, amend the 24 budget for VLT to revolving loan fund. Mr. McGinnis. Six, 2025, uh, authorize Lobala to proceed with Swan sidewalk design. Mr. Richmond. Seven, 2025, Fair Housing Officer ADA Coordinator. Mr. Twichell. Eight, 2025, resolution to adopt a complaint policy for the ADA. Ms. Schmidt. Nine, 2025, uh, use of 26,000 administrative reserve to upgrade the card access control system at the fire department. Mr. McGinnis. Ten, 2025, resolution to accept the New York Main Street Grant. Schmidt. Eleven, 2025, Batavia Development Corporation to administer the Main Street Grant. Mr. Twichell. Twelve, 2025, license agreement with the railroad. Mr. McKeaton. Thirteen, 2025, AIM aid and allocating funds to the revolving loan fund. Mr. Twichell. And fourteen, 2025, license agreement with Everybody Eats. Ms. Briggs. City Attorney, do you have anything to report?
Council President and members of council, nothing specific to report on this time, we are busy across the usual suite of matters though.
City Manager?
Yes, thank you Council President. Tonight I'd like to introduce Bailey Gross, who is our new Superintendent of Water and Waste Water. She comes to us with a wealth of knowledge from her time with the New York State Department of Health and Genesee County Department of Health as well. So she knows the chemistry in the water side very well, she's getting up to speed on the sewer side and our lateral pipes in the ground. I'd just like to say, welcome Bailey, thank you for joining our team.
Thank you. Please, Scotty.
Um, speech? No, just go. Um, just a few minor items.
Can you give us a breakdown of the sewer plant?
Can I have like two more weeks?
We'll catch you at the next meeting.
I'm sorry.
She can do the water plant all day long.
Yeah.
And source protection for our water as well.
Yeah, that's it.
Um, just a few items, you were delivered your city budget tonight, I look forward to reviewing starting off with revenue as we do every year at the next meeting. Um, we'll see in the manager's proposed budget that you will be reviewing um, an increase of taxable value that'll allow us to lower the rate this year by about 50 cents. So, just a quick preview of what you'll see. You're welcome to email, call, have any questions prior to or throughout the budget time. Eric and I are both here to look at different items and questions and requests, so please don't hesitate to get those in.
Yeah, we can. So, so just to clarify that, that's, you're gonna lower the rate 50 cents per thousand.
Per thousand.
So, it's not just 50 cents total, it's 50 cents per?
Per thousand, correct, is the proposed budget.
Right.
Yep. Um, we're still working through with DEC, the Speedies Permit renewal for the wastewater treatment plant, Bailey's now on the team to help us with that. Tom as well. Um, we continue to have decent dialogue with New York State um, regarding the uniqueness of our plant and how we can operate, operate and maximize efficiency. Um, we wanna thank council for allowing the TIP grant applications to go in at the last meeting. We have submitted those. Um, they're, were on the list, it's similar to Richmond Harvester, it may not be this year, next year. It could be three years down the road, but identifying projects and putting our name forward is very important. And other than what Tammy and everyone else has gone over, I think those, those are the large updates for right now.
Rachel, talking about water, wastewater, I've hit several constituents calling me with concerns, and I think it's some miscommunications about the lead pipe inspections. And one person said, wow, I, the way I heard it, the person told me that, that if there's any lead pipes, I'll just replace them all. And I don't think people really understand what it's about, so.
So we are working towards full replacement, both on the public and private side, and that'll depend on financing and grant funds. Um, can we replace today? No, we don't have the authorization or the funds. We're still in the exploratory phases, and Tom, do you have any updated numbers on how our?
No.
No. Out of 300, we have at least 100 homes that have responded.
For that, we're probably at four, about.
Four homes?
Four hundred.
Oh.
They've finally responded.
Oh, great, okay.
We've gotten more.
And how many hit lead pipes?
You know, that number I don't know yet, we haven't received the Excel sheets back.
So those Excels will be loaded into a GIS system that yourself, all constituents, anyone in the state can go on and look at, and it's a little dot, and through the dot, there's a line.
Rachel, a lot of the people who've seen yours, they don't even have computers, or if they did, they just turned them off and set them off.
I'll help them with the office of the aging, I'll set everybody up to see. But the point is that it'll be full public transparency of information of all the lines in the city, including on the private sector side as well. And then we move towards a replacement schedule.
Great, thank you.
Anything more you could add?
Nope, I'll stop, thank you.
So any questions for this City Manager and City Attorney? Resolution one, 2025, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move a resolution to enter in the RIM, the PAM, pavement incorporated for construction services for 2021. Infrastructure improvement for Cohactin Water.
Second in line, Ms. Briggs. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twichell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Resolution two, 2025, Mr. Richmond, please.
Thank you Council President, I move a resolution in support of continued and increased state aid for local governments.
Second in line, Ms. Schmidt. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twichell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Resolution number three, 2025, Mr. Twichell, please.
Thank you Council President, I move a resolution to use Department of Public Works reserves amend the 2425 budget and close out capital projects.
Second in line, Mr. McGinnis. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Twichell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes. Resolution number four, 2025, Ms. Briggs, please.
Thank you Council President, I move a resolution to waive residency requirement.
Second in line, Mr. Guy. Questions or concerns?
I, I'd just like to state though, it'd be nice, uh, maybe as the Council President stated earlier, to have some incentives with all lease apartments being constructed in the community, maybe it'll free up some housing and, you know, we can get more employees interested in living in Batavia. So.
It is part of what we're preparing for.
Pardon?
It is part of what we're preparing for next month.
Yeah, I, I hope some other cities have had success with tax abatements and different things like that, so especially where, I know they've gone into some neighborhoods and they've offered a good bait that if people would fix up homes in some of the older neighborhoods and I've met some people that live in the old First Ward in Buffalo. The homes are beautiful inside, it's just, you know, mansions. And uh, policemen have moved in there and some of the firemen, so. Thank you.
Anyone else? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twichell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Resolution five, 2025, Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2425 budget recognizing the LVT and allocating funds to the revolving loan fund. RLF. Transplant.
Second in line, Mr. Twichell. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twichell?
Yes.
Guy?
Resolution six, 2025, Mr. Richmond, please.
Thank you Council President. I move a resolution for an amendment and restated resolution to authorize Lobala to proceed with the Swan Street sidewalk design and accept the spoken services.
Second in line, Ms. Schmidt. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twichell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Resolution seven, 2025, Mr. Twichell, please.
Thank you Council President, I move a resolution appointing a fair housing officer and an Americans with Disabilities Act Coordinator.
Second in line, Ms. Briggs. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Twichell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes. Resolution number eight, 2025, Ms. McGinnis?
Thank you Council President, I move a resolution to adopt a complete policy for the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Second in line, Mr. Guy. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twichell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Resolution nine, 2025, Ms. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move a resolution authorizing the use of 26,500 dollars administrative reserve, upgrade the Florida Department Card Access Control System, and amend the 2024 budget.
Second in line, Mr. Twichell. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twichell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Resolution ten, 2025, Ms. Schmidt, please.
Thank you Council President, I move a resolution to accept a 2024 New York Main Street Grant.
Second in line, Ms. Briggs. Any questions or concerns? I, I have one concern, I don't know if it's been updated or caught already, but in the bottom of this uh, resolution ten dash 2025, and the last whereas, it says, uh, are responsible for all project cots. So I don't know if we're putting up beds or cots, I assume it's a typo. So if we can just make sure the, when I sign or when the other one is officially filed, that it's correct, please.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
We will amend the resolution.
Anyone else that they have any concerns or questions? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Twichell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Resolution eleven, 2025, Mr. Twichell, please.
Thank you Council President, I move a resolution to authorize the Batavia Development Corporation